Our third panel concludes our discussion of synthetic drugs with input from law enforcement and stakeholders in the criminal justice community. Our panelists are Keith Graves, Detective Hector Alcala, Lindsay LaSalle, and Mary Price. Mr. Graves is a retired police sergeant who worked in the San Francisco Bay area for 29 years. He is the founder and president of Graves &amp; Associates, a company dedicated to providing drug training to law enforcement and private industry. He was named as California's Narcotics Officer of the Year and was a winner of the Mothers Against Drunk Driving's California Hero Award. He has years of experience as a narcotics detective and a narcotics unit supervisor and is a drug recognition expert instructor. Mr. Graves earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in Business Management from St. Mary's College of California and a Master's of Arts degree in Criminal Justice from American Military University. Detective Alcala has served in the Kentucky State Police since 2005. He was named Kentucky Trooper of the Year in 2008. In 2010, he began working as an undercover narcotics detective in the Drug Enforcement Special Investigations Unit. In that role, he received the 2012 Kentucky Narcotics Officer of the Year Award. He is currently assigned to an FBI Safe Streets Task Force where he investigates violent crimes and gang-related offenses. He is a graduate of the Kentucky Department of Criminal Justice Training and the Kentucky State Police Academy. Ms. LaSalle is a senior staff attorney for the Drug Policy Alliance Office of Legal Affairs. She engages in litigation, legislative drafting, and public education in support of drug policy reform. She received her Bachelor of Arts and Juris Doctorate from the University of California, Berkeley, where she served as a Development Editor of the California Law Review. Ms. Price is General Counsel of Families Against Mandatory Minimums, where she has worked since 2000. She directs their litigation project and advocates for reform of federal sentencing and corrections law and policy before Congress, the U.S. Sentencing Commission, the Bureau of Prisons, and the Department of Justice. Ms. Price graduated cum laude from Georgetown University Law Center, where she was a public interest law scholar, and the Law Center's first recipient of the Bettina Pruckmeyer Human Rights Award. She graduated Phi Beta Kappa from the University of Oregon. Mr. Graves.
Members of the Sentencing Commission, thank you for the opportunity to give the National Narcotics Officers Association Coalition's view on the Commission's proposed amendments to the federal sentencing guidelines related to synthetic drugs. Synthetic drugs, including fentanyl and its analogs, synthetic cannabinoids, and synthetic cannabinoids, has had a profound impact on American law enforcement. The past decades, law enforcement only had to worry about a few drugs like heroin, methamphetamine, and cocaine, but the new century brought with it new drugs. These new drugs brought with them a new scourge that's impacted our community in ways that we weren't prepared to handle. These synthetic drugs can't be combated like traditional street drugs of the past, and law enforcement officers around the country are having to change their tactics due to the strength potency of not only fentanyl but of synthetic cannabinoids and synthetic cannabinoids. Here's an example, prior testimony has shown that the potency of synthetic cannabinoids and their chemical structure. However, how synthetic cannabinoid drug dealers operate and the impact that they have on our society needs attention. A high-level drug dealer will order multiple kilos of synthetic cannabinoids from China. Once in the United States, the dealer will take it to a facility where the chemical's going to be modified and sprayed on vegetable matter such as domiana. After spraying the chemical compound on an herb, it's dim-placed in fancy foil packaging and shipped to internet dealers or retail facilities around the U.S. like smoke shops, liquor stores, and gas stations. The foil packaging then often depicts logos and characterizations that are often attractive to younger Americans. I've spoken to narcotics detectives, whose job it is to investigate these spraying centers. They report that their team members are experiencing side effects from exposure to synthetic cannabinoids, including kidney damage. As an example, one Nevada narcotics detective went to the doctor who said that his kidneys, the detective's kidneys, looked like he had been abusing drugs for years. And another HSI special agent has severe kidney damage that's tracked back to chronic exposure from these spraying centers. The CDC accompanied one Nevada task force and monitored them prior to raiding a synthetic spice factory, and then monitored them after the raid. All team members were wearing personal protective equipment that is standard for most drug lab investigations. The task force members provided a urine test prior to the raid and again after the raid. Four of five team members tested positive for synthetic cannabinoids after that raid. It's apparent that even with protective equipment, these powerful synthetic cannabinoids are causing damage to our narcotics investigators. In regards to fentanyl and its analogs, there's been much disinformation put out about fentanyl and its impact on law enforcement and our community. First and foremost, most of the medical community uses pharmaceutical fentanyl as a baseline for their comments about the drug. However, there are two types of fentanyl. You've got pharmaceutical fentanyl and the street fentanyl. As an example, you can't compare fentanyl in a pharmaceutical patch form to fentanyl found in the street. Pharmaceutical fentanyl is produced in a clean laboratory that must meet scientific standards as well as government standards. Street fentanyl is made in a lab either in China or Mexico with no safeguards in place and no governmental oversight. Sometimes it may truly be traditional fentanyl formula that we see in the hospital. However, some are analogs that were never meant for human consumption. Same analogs are more powerful than fentanyl, some are less powerful than fentanyl. We know that fentanyl has had a profound effect on America. We only have to look at the overdose statistics to realize how bad the problem is, but it's our belief it's only going to get worse. A simple review of economics and logistics can make you come to the realization that fentanyl will become worse in the near future. Mexican drug cartels have realized the value of fentanyl and have started producing it and smuggling it into the United States. It makes economic sense for them to do this, and as an example, cultivating opium poppy field is labor-intensive. It takes time and money to process that. But if the drug cartel has a fentanyl lab, they can produce a kilo of fentanyl for as little as $3,500 without the intensive labor listed above. One kilo of fentanyl is the equivalent of 50 kilos of heroin when you compare potency, so drug cartels need to only smuggle a fraction of the fentanyl into the U.S. compared to heroin. It makes economic sense for them to do this. Additionally, fentanyl dosages are measured in micrograms whereas traditional drugs are measured in milligrams, so it only takes a minute amount to add to another drug like heroin to make it much more powerful. A drug dealer could purchase one kilo of Mexican fentanyl for $19,000. This kilo is going to make 1 million pills, which would be the equivalent of about a million heroin points. At $20 to $40 per dose, one kilo can net a drug dealer millions of dollars. You don't have to see, you don't see that with any other drug that we have dealt with in the past. As you can see, the future of drug abuse lies with these new synthetic drugs. The problem is not going to go away. It's only going to continue to grow and flourish under our antiquated drug laws. We'll need to rethink how we go about investigating and prosecuting drug dealers that have turned to the future of drug abuse.
Detective Alcala?
Acting Chair Pirel and distinguished members of the United States Sentencing Commission, we want to thank you for holding this very timely meeting today regarding the impact of synthetic drugs in our communities. Today, I will specifically testify on some disturbing distributing methods used by large-scale dealers and street local dealers. I'm assigned to the Ninth Circuit Eastern District of Kentucky, which, this geographical location is, as most cities in the United States, is a convenient location for the Mexican cartel to operate. Lexington, a city of approximately 318,000 persons in population, happens to be the largest city in the circuit. We have two major interstates that connect and have access to the northeast part of the United States. For the past couple of years, we have seen a significant increase of fentanyl and fentanyl analogs in our communities. Through our investigations, we have learned that heroin and fentanyl supply lines are often essentially the same. The Mexican cartel hide fentanyl and heroin inside vehicles and bring it to our communities to be delivered in person. Once the dealers receive these drugs, they basically break them down and sell them by ounces or kilograms. Data from the Kentucky State Police Laboratories regarding the fentanyl and fentanyl analogs in the past years, the results are clear. In 2010, the Kentucky State Police Laboratories only received 0.1% of all submissions were fentanyl. By 2017, the results had increased with a 9.2% of all submissions. As of March 1st of 2018, the numbers are staggering, resulting in submissions of 8.8% just on two months of all submissions of drugs. Just recently, the Kentucky State Police, Federal Bureau of Investigation, and Lexington Police Department conducted a multi-agency investigation targeting a career-long trafficking offender. Through the investigations, we learned that he had ties to the Sinaloa cartel in Mexico. This offender ordered kilograms of fentanyl and heroin to be delivered to Lexington. Through phone conversations, by his own confession, he knew he was purchasing fentanyl. Purchasing between $55,000 to $60,000 per kilo, fentanyl in our area ranks amongst the highest of all narcotics. Again, by his own confession, once the offender received his narcotics, he would cut one kilogram into three kilograms of fentanyl, increasing his monetary profits 340%. When asked, this unconcerned offender informed investigators of the way he was testing the purity of his products. By simply giving a sample of the product he just processed to a street-level dealer, who will in turn give the narcotics to a user and simply sit and watch their reactions. It is unknown how many overdose deaths this practice might cost. There's a misconception of traffickers adding fentanyl to heroin, basically they're adding fentanyl to heroin because fentanyl being the most potent drug. As we all know, traffickers can use all types of cutting agents to increase their profits. They use heroin, cocaine, and ladies and gentlemen, we're receiving reports of street-level dealers adding fentanyl to marijuana just so they can gain edge on their competition. That is why we're seeing fentanyl and fentanyl analogs used as the primary drug on drug trafficking offenders. The question was asked regarding the proposed enhancements on the sentencing guidelines. As we all know, enhancements do not fit every charge. Proposed language of knowingly misrepresenting fentanyl during a transaction or knowingly marketing fentanyl as another substance, we feel as investigators it would be hard to prove. Previously used by the Commission, 2016 sentencing results regarding fentanyl on traffic offenders, it shows that only 16% of the offenders knew that they were dealing fentanyl. The majority, 53%, did not know that they were trafficking fentanyl, and the remaining 31% investigators could not prove or could not tell if the offender knew or did not know that they were trafficking fentanyl. To conclude, it's been our investigative experience dealing with large drug trafficking offenders, they having knowledge of the product that they're selling. Depending on the customer base, somewhere down the chain, the transparency of the product changes, often dealing, often leaving the street-level dealer not having complete knowledge of the product they're selling, and these type of practices leads to overdose deaths. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Detective.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. LaSalle?
Yes, thank you, Judge Pirel, and thank you to the Commission for inviting me here today to share the perspective of the Drug Policy Alliance. The Drug Policy Alliance is an organization that advances policies that aim to do two things. One, reduce the harms of drug use itself, but two, also reduce the harms of drug criminalization and drug prohibition. So it's with that framework that I would like to evaluate the Commission's proposed amendments today. With respect to the harms of drug use, I know that the Commission has taken lots of testimony on the public health harms of synthetic drugs and in particular fentanyl, and I certainly share law enforcement's concerns about the public health crisis that fentanyl has now become, particularly the increasing and skyrocketing rates of overdose deaths. But I must stress that there are public health solutions to this public health crisis, and we don't need to revert back to this knee-jerk reaction of criminalization, particularly because the public health solutions are based on science, whereas we know from the research and evidence that there is not an ounce of, there's really not a shred of evidence that proves that criminalization has any impact whatsoever on reducing the harms of drug use. All the research shows that sentence severity has no deterrent effect whatsoever, so increased penalties, as the Commission proposes, is not ultimately going to impact supply and it's not going to impact demand. On the other hand, what is well documented is the replacement effect. So we know that when you incarcerate one seller for synthetic drugs or otherwise, the market responds, and another seller pops up to take their place, or the seller's already in the market just assumed that share. And so if these proposed amendments go into effect, people are still going to be selling drugs, people are still going to be buying drugs, and people are still going to be dying of drug-related overdoses. And so ultimately, they won't have had any impact on reducing the harms of drug use. And in fact, if we evaluate the proposed amendments with respect to the potential harms of criminalization, we see that in fact that risk of death and the risk of other health harms is potentially amplified. Taking a broad view, drug law enforcement efforts have been associated with a number of unintended harms and consequences, and these are often the exact opposite of the initial intent behind these laws. So we see that there is a reduced price of illicit drugs, increased purity, health-related harms like the ones we've been talking about today, overdose, but also addiction, transmission of infectious diseases, social harms like gun violence or homicide, and many others. And I worry that the Commission's proposed amendments, particularly with respect to the class-based categorization of synthetic drugs and the equivalencies between fentanyl and fentanyl analogs, are similarly going to have unintended consequences and consequences that are severely detrimental to public health. The Commission itself acknowledges, for instance, that the fentanyl analog car fentanyl, and we've also heard this from law enforcement, carries significantly greater risks than fentanyl and is significantly more potent, but then proposes, kind of seemingly in the same breath, that the sale and distribution of fentanyl receive equivalent penalties and sentences to that of the more dangerous analogs. And similarly, with respect to synthetic cannabinoids or synthetic cannabinoids, there is a recognition that drugs within these categories vary widely in terms of their potency, purity, and potential harms, and yet there's a proposal to categorize them all similarly and sentence them all similarly. I think, you know, the black market can be expected to respond to these changes, and I think we have to recognize that the sentencing guidelines are at large, and these proposed amendments will impact the way that the black market operates. People will not change their behavior, we know that there is no, or people will not stop their behavior, we know there's no deterrent effect, but certainly we know that people alter and adjust their behavior to account for the criminal law and do so in a way to minimize their risk. And we saw this in the case of, the context of alcohol prohibition, for instance. So amendments that don't account for the disparate harms of these particular drugs within these categories will actually have the perverse effect of incentivizing the manufacture, distribution, and sale of the most potent substances that pack the biggest punch in the smallest dose. In other words, there would be no reason, no incentive, not to put the most potent, dangerous, and harmful products to market. This is especially true given that the guidelines don't distinguish, as we've heard, between mixtures and pure substances. So fentanyl is safer the more diluted it is, but under the guidelines, research is showing that low-level sellers are in fact diluting fentanyl with other substances or with cutting agents as a harm reduction measure to actually ward off potential death. But they would, those folks would be sentenced higher than people who are distributing and selling the more pure and potent version of the substance. And so I'll just conclude by saying that I don't believe that these amendments impact the harms of drug use. I think they compound them, I think they compound the harms of criminalization, and I would just ask that the Commission reconsider the amendments in light of the implications that it could potentially have on public health. Thank you so much.
Ms. Price?
Thank you, Judge Pirel, and members of the Commission for inviting me to testify. Many of FAM's 75,000 members are affected by the guidelines that you write and amend. They follow guideline developments closely, sometimes we help them with that. Sometimes they participate in public comment, you get letters from them. I'm really honored to represent them on this panel today. I speak today cognizant of the deep concerns that have been expressed by law enforcement and medical experts about the impact of these substances on individuals and on our communities. And I want to be sure that everything that I say today, that nothing is taken to mean or to make the impression that we make light of those concerns or to diminish what we see as the harmful effects and the tolls that are incurred by these substances. I'm not a drug policy expert, I'm certainly not a member of law enforcement, I'm not a scientist, I'm not even a practitioner. I've not been personally affected by these substances in the way some people on the panel have described. Nonetheless, I am a longtime student of the sentencing guidelines, and as a student of the guidelines and as an advocate before the Sentencing Commission, I have witnessed over the years, and FAM has pushed back over the years, over efforts to convince the Commission to increase sentences, drug sentences particularly, as a way to address public safety and public health problems. These efforts have been misguided for the most part. These problems are not solved by locking more people up for longer periods of time. As you know, drug guidelines are dominated by drug quantity questions, and drug quantity has been shown time and time again to correlate poorly with culpability and to lead to unjust outcomes. And so you're preparing once again to assign values on the drug quantity table in response to heightened concerns about health and safety risks of these substances, and I urge you to approach this task with great restraint. Getting this decision right, as you know better than I, is really important, but it's also very, very tough in this rather overheated environment. It parallels, this environment parallels in some ways the environment in which crack cocaine sentences were adopted in the mid-1980s, as earlier witnesses testified. A mistake was made at that time in the heat of extreme concerns about the threats that were posed by crack. Those mistakes were fueled by also misperceptions and misconceptions about crack cocaine. It took 20 years, more than 20 years, over three reports from the Sentencing Commission with recommendations and an act of Congress to partially correct that mistake. People went to prison for unconscionable lengths of time, families were torn apart, and communities were scarred by incarceration. Retroactivity can only do so much to heal some of those wounds and to restore faith in the criminal justice system. So we're in the midst of another epidemic, and we appreciate your deliberative approach, but we're very concerned about the variety of views and the different approaches to how to classify these substances, whether to put them in a class, and how to correctly assign marijuana equivalencies that will lead to sentences that meet the purposes of punishment. I mentioned some, but not all of them in my written submission. They're better and I think more thoroughly addressed in comments from others like Drug Policy Alliance and the Public Defender. But I do want to say that the uncertainty and disagreement about these substances should caution restraint. But we also encourage restraint and lenity for another reason. Every time you amend a drug guideline, it's another opportunity for you to ensure that that guideline helps a judge impose a sentence that deters criminal conduct, imposes just an appropriate punishment, promotes real rehabilitation, and of course protects the community. And as we know and as been mentioned earlier, certainty and swiftness of apprehension and punishment does more to deter drug crime than the length of the sentence. And just this week, actually, the Pew Charitable Trust, which tracks federal and state sentencing and other matters, released a report about the relationship between sentence length and public safety and public health concerns. And the question that Pew posed itself was, quote, "whether, how, and to what degree imprisonment for drug offenses affects the nature and extent of the nation's drug problems." And they reviewed data from 50 states from 2014, I believe, from law enforcement, corrections agencies, and public health agencies, and what they concluded was this. The analysis found no statistically significant relationship between state drug imprisonment rates and three indicators of state drug problems: drug use, drug overdose deaths, and drug arrests. And so given those findings, the Pew Trust called again for alternatives to incarceration that are both less costly than imprisonment but also can lead to better outcomes. So the Commission's also led the way in exploring alternatives to incarceration, and the knowledge and principles that animate those inquiries should likewise lead you to set ratios that err on the side of lenity and restraint rather than severity. I can't think of any reason to do otherwise, given the overwhelming evidence that sentences like can't curb drug abuse and overdose deaths or drug crimes, and in light of the damage done to families and individuals and communities by unduly long sentences. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions?
First question, Mr. Graves.
Sir?
In light of the arguments that have just been made, is it fair to compare crack and powdered cocaine with the epidemic that we're now seeing with fentanyl and fentanyl analogs? We've heard that a couple of times today.
You can't compare. Besides, one's a stimulant, one's an opiate, but let's talk about-
In terms of the consequences?
All right, so let's talk about the consequences. I was an arc back when crack was around, and obviously an arc recently. You don't see the numbers of deaths back then that you see now. So with crack cocaine, the deaths were more related to violence from drug sales and stuff like that, truth issues. But here, with the opiate epidemic, I've never seen anything like this, ever. To see the numbers of people that are dying, the numbers of people that are affected, and even still with crack cocaine, you can identify crack cocaine, it's very obvious just by the look, the texture. When you're talking about fentanyl, we're finding fentanyl, as you see in prior testimony, in everything. And some of the, one of the issues that I don't think has been brought up, that these labs aren't, some labs aren't testing for fentanyl. And so when they actually learn about it and then they go back and test for it, they're finding out that, yes, they've had fentanyl in their community for some time.
Probably, probably it's been underreported to the Sentencing Commission in terms of the cases that-
Oh, I have no doubt. Yeah, and as an example, I go around the country teaching officers how to deal with fentanyl on the street. A lot of them will say, "We don't have fentanyl in our area." You know, but after we give them a class, then they'll go back and they'll review their cases and send stuff back to the lab, then they find out, yes, they have had it, and it's been around for quite some time. They'll look, one of the indicators that we tell them to look at is, "Look at your overdose deaths. Look at your overdose deaths compared, like right now, compared to, let's say, three, four years ago, and you'll see that there's a significant increase." And it's because people aren't test, they're not testing for fentanyl specifically, they might just test for heroin or something like that. So if somebody had taken meth that had fentanyl in it, then they only tested for meth, they didn't test for fentanyl, so it won't even show up as a statistic. So I think the statistics are off. But just going back to the crack/fentanyl relationship, it is a lot different, you can't compare the two.
Second question, Detective Alcala. There's a comment made earlier about fentanyl being safer if it's diluted. Have you seen fentanyl on the street that's safe?
No, sir, I have not. And the key to remember, and me dealing with, as a sometimes undercover officer and dealing with confidential informants all the time, the key to remember is, there is no fear of the consequences out there. When it comes to large trafficker drug offenders, and when it comes to mid-level dealers, and sometimes street-level dealers, the only thing they're looking at is their profits. They're not caring about how, "Am I packaging this right or not?" These people are not chemists, they don't have no background or anything like that. The main thing they're looking at, "How can I gain more profits with this right here? Monetary gain."
My takeaway of their testimony may be different because I don't think the Ms. LaSalle or Ms. Price are saying, "This isn't a very dangerous drug," and nor are they saying, "This is like the same thing that we dealt with with crack and so forth and so on." What I take is that the issue that they're raising is, does the length of the sentence correlate with the concerns that we have with respect to reci- correlate with the concerns that we have with respect to recidivism? Let's just take recidivism, not seriousness of the wrongdoing, not the impact, in a sense, of these drugs, which I think your characterization is absolutely correct and alarming to the Commission, all of us. So the question really is, is there evidence out there that suggests that when you have a 16-year sentence or a 14-year sentence, that there is going to be a higher rate of recidivism with respect to that particular drug, or that particular transaction, or that particular overall scope? And I'm interested, actually, in Mr. Graves, in your experience, and you've been right out there for years, whether you're aware of evidence that if, that a 14-year sentence, as an example, is less effective than a 16-year, other than the obvious fact that a person who is in jail for the longer period of time is less likely while in jail to commit the criminal offense?
So I can only give anecdotal evidence, you know, just my experience on the street. I can tell you, like, in 28 years, I was an officer for 28 years, 11 months. I tried to make it to 29, but retirement was too attractive. I gotta tell you, I dealt with the same people over and over and over again. I would see them over and over, and it would just would never stop. And I started narcotics when, you know, at the end of We Say No, and, you know, we were tough on everything, and people went away, I didn't see them for a long time. And it just seemed like those people tend to not come back and reoffend. Now, towards the end of my career, California's very lenient in their drug laws, and I'm seeing people repeat constantly. And they're coming in, they're coming out of jail, and then reoffending, and then going back in, you know, just, it's this constant, you know, revolving door. I don't like it. You know, we're not here to say that we want to put addicts in jail. The best thing in my career was to have a guy come up to me and tell me, "You arrested me on March 11th, whatever date, and I've been drug-free ever since then." And that's what I want to hear. I've seen less and less of that, as California has, you know, gone towards just more liberalization view of drugs.
May I just respond to that briefly?
Sure.
With respect to the recidivism and it being tied to leniency of drug laws, I certainly appreciate your experience in the field, but the research, the empirical evidence shows the exact opposite. And I would posture that the reason that people are recidivating, if they are, is because they have a drug felony on their record, and they're totally disenfranchised from being able to participate in society and aren't able to get a job. So it's the collateral consequences of that conviction and of that sentence to begin with that leads to the recidivism.
But it isn't really, I'm hearing both of you, and I think both of you may be right, which, and so that question is, how can you both be right? And it seems to me that you have to look at the details, whether you're talking about short sentences, which I think you find in California, coming from California, and seeing what happens in the state court system. I think you're correct. I think that, you know, six months or nine months, and this may upset other people, but I do see this rate of recidivism rather high at those levels. I'm looking at the longer sentence, I'm looking at the 10-year, the 12-year, the 14-year, the 16-year sentence, because, number one, it's expensive. Number two, it certainly eliminates or reduces the possibility that that individual can reintegrate into society. And that's why I'm very interested in aging out. But I'm not sure that you're both saying different things, that I'm just saying that you have to look at the details.
You also have to take into account the collateral costs to the community of removing people for long periods of time from their community, and I think that has been well documented. I know that-
Collateral costs and benefits. There are some, there are some who are removed from the community, and that's not a bad thing.
Right, we're not against incarceration, this is not our position, but we do think that it's very important that sort of the first step to reducing recidivism is a right-sized sentence. And so you have a big job to do, and we appreciate that.
Just two questions. First, for Detective Akala, on the question of proving knowledge. I'm trying to get a handle of how much of it is a question of proving it versus some people don't know. So, you know, you gave the example of the dealer who said he was doing it intentionally, and then they would give drugs to people and see if they died. So I, that would be an easy case to prove knowledge. And I think we'd all agree those people are more culpable than the people who just unwittingly get the drugs. And so, you know, from the perspective of trying to have sentences that reflect varying levels of culpability, the first part of my question is, do you agree that people who knowingly do it are worse than the people who sell fentanyl and they don't realize that it's in there?
Oh, absolutely.
And then the second question is, for the people who do know and why it's difficult to prove, I guess, in the way, could it be demonstrated by the government by showing either repeat sales after someone has been seriously injured or died, or the price that the drug? I'm trying to get the ways in which the government could overcome the hurdle of knowledge. If you could just, in the cases where you have to show it, what kinds of facts you use?
That's a very good question, Your Honor, thank you for that. So, as we all know, like I said, testified earlier, enhancements do not fit every charge. And when it comes to proving it in court and getting enough evidence, that means that us, the investigators, we have to go to a greater length-
Sure.
-to try to find, you know, we have to try to get warrants for telephone conversations, trying to get warrants for, you know, any type of ledger devices, or even in some interviews, you know, we can gain that knowledge. But it will be hard to prove. So, in my opinion, the sentencing guidelines, the proposed sentencing guidelines are correct. I'm glad I'm not on your shoes, because this is a very important, very important step. And I'm sure back when the crack cocaine was around, they didn't have this type of, you guys didn't, or whoever was in charge, didn't have that type of knowledge or previous history before that we have now. So it is our experience that investigators will have to go to a greater length trying to provide evidence that this offender's knew or did not know.
But if you enhance the sentence, that's not necessarily a bad thing, right?
No, sir.
So, Mr. Graves, I have a technical question.
Yes, sir.
If, to the extent you know, you talked about law enforcement officer exposure to synthetic cannabinoids and causing kidney damage-
Yes, sir.
-extreme kind of damage. Do you have any idea of just what kind of exposure produces that damage?
So, I just found out about this recently. I found out about it last November, and it's been with one specific team in Las Vegas area that had been hitting repeatedly different spice labs, where they're getting the chemical, putting the acetone, spraying it on, just like with the earlier testimony with the cement mixer and doing all that. That team, initially, there's not a lot of data. This is all anecdotal, but we, but when you have, it reminds me of when we were raiding meth labs, and all of us were getting cancer. In fact, some of us are waiting for the chemical bullet to hit us. You know, with these guys, you know, with us, with the meth, with the meth issue, our cancers develop many years later. With these guys, they're raiding these labs, they're hitting them, and then all of a sudden, you've got, you know, like that HSI agent, who all of a sudden is in the hospital, he's in ICU, you know, and he's got this severe kidney damage, they start backtracking, figuring out what it is.
Does this take months, days? I mean, what-
I think, I'm trying to think how long back that they've been dealing with this. I mean, it's at least a year, right? But I mean, we're not talking multiple years.
Yeah.
And this is, this is a short amount of time. And to be honest, it's kind of freaking me out. I'm looking, I mean, the drug enforcement has not been good to my health. And I'm looking at what's happening to these guys, and I'm scared. They've now, they're going back, they're now taking a look, bringing in CDC to, you know, do the monitoring. We'll see what happens when everybody gets done with their studies, but they're using the standard PPE that we would use in a lab, they're not, they're not Level A, they're using, you know, they're just using an air purifying respirator, they're not in an SCVA. I don't know if it's an issue with their decontamination, I can't see it getting through a Ty-Cam suit, but I'm sure, I'm sure what they were doing was treating it like, you know, just like we would do a meth lab, and just using that same procedure. Well, apparently, that's not good enough with what we're looking at. And, you know, like, like I had my written testimony, this is all new.
Right.
You know, and-
Okay.
-this is happening fast.
Detective Akala, you said, in response to a question from Judge Reeves, that there's no really, there's no safe fentanyl. But you also said, though, that these dealers are responding to competition and mixing fentanyl and drugs? And my question is, why in the heck would that give you a competitive advantage if it's so potentially lethal?
Correct. So, I have, previous studies have been done, I'm no doctor, but previous studies that I've read, it shows that humans, they increase their tolerance when they're using a certain type of drugs. So if heroin, you know, is a disease, the addiction is a disease, if a heroin addict takes heroin and uses one gram a day, and it gives him to a tolerance of two grams per day, well, that's around $250. But if that person finds out that this other dealer has a stronger heroin or better quality, they're gonna go spend $100 to try to accommodate for, you know, the cost. And that's why this person is gaining the edge on the other competition. Again, they're looking at monetary gain, not their very own concern what's happening to the public.
May I just add a few clarifications to what the research has borne out with respect to what the fentanyl market looks like? So fentanyl essentially entered the market around 2013. Heroin deaths started skyrocketing around 2010. So you have an enormous transition from people who are using, misusing prescription opioids, who transitioned to the illicit market around 2010. And once you had this huge market of heroin users, around 2013, fentanyl entered the market. Fentanyl, by and large, is not a drug that people are seeking. They don't want fentanyl. This was not something that they wanted in their product. This was, they were getting heroin contaminated with fentanyl. Now, particularly new and younger users who don't have a 20-year history, for instance, of using heroin, some of those folks are now seeking fentanyl. But by and large, this is not a drug that most people want to use. In many parts of the country, unfortunately, now, fentanyl is totally ubiquitous with the heroin supply. So you really can't get heroin without fentanyl in many parts of the Northeast and the Midwest. But, you know, the idea that people are adding, you know, fentanyl because it's what the consumer wants and to increase profits, isn't really borne out by what the research is showing in terms of drug user preferences. They're adding it just simply to cut costs, you know, as was mentioned before, in terms of the ease of making synthetic drugs as opposed to, you know, cultivating the poppy. But I do think it's an important distinction in terms of what the market looks like on the ground, in terms of the user's awareness and the low-level sellers who are-
I would think the manufacturer doesn't want to kill the customer, and I don't-
Precisely.
I don't understand exactly why we have this phenomenon.
Right.
Commissioner Balaeto, do you have any questions? If you're there?
No, Judge, no, Judge, thank you.
Okay. We've gone a fair amount over, but I think this has been helpful testimony. I want to thank all of you for being here today. We have your written submissions as well.